Getting the order?
Are you all set?
For the planning board for Monday, April 29.
We don't -- no bills?
No bills? Oh, it's good we have no bills. Except for this bill.
We have a multitude of minutes.
Oh, great.
Now, I didn't reprint March 11th for everybody. I have one extra copy here of all the minutes that we need. If you do want to show this stack. You got yours there, Bob?
Aye.
That'll get you through to the 17th. You got them?
Yes.
You got them over there? Okay. You all set? We have more after that, but that's just -- we have the 22nd, which I have over here.
Am I missing the vote somewhere?
The vote?
On the solar project? Is that part of this meeting?
Yep. The vote is on page six, just before the conditions are listed. And then there's some more discussion on page 15.
I saw that. I was trying to find out where the vote to place. Does everybody have any concerns with the minutes from Monday, March 11th, 2019? There's no discussion in regards to the March 11th, 2019 minutes. Is there a motion on the table?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So, two opposed? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Anybody have any concerns, comments, questions for the minutes from March 11th, Monday? Which one was that, 325?
Yes.
It's not quite as long.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 25th, 2019 minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
The minutes should be April 8th?
Yes.
Do you have that?
I don't believe I do.
Turn down my other mic. April 8th and April 17th. Pass them down to Jim. You bring them in from outside.
From outside.
Is that one of those Mayflower set bites? Sure, leave them on the floor.
My God. I'll make a motion to approve the April 8th, 2019 minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve the April 17 minutes, 2019.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I abstain.
I'll abstain.
Jim, did you second? Who seconded?
Rob.
Okay, April 22. Wait a second. Okay. Take one from each staff, because one is the regular meeting, the other is the public hearing. You have a copy of each staff.
On the first round of minutes, Monday, April 22nd, 2019. Page three, Grammy DG Series LLC.
Yes.
Bill Scanlon Review, two peer review proposals, one from Tian Bin and one from Sherman and Frederick. Wasn't there a third one?
No, just to -- it was -- Sherman and Frederick had a traffic sub.
Oh, that's --
Oh, they should have been affected.
I see. Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the first round of minutes on Monday, April 22nd, 2019.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstain?
No, you're second. This is the public hearing. And I had one correction on page two. Down the very bottom. Jim, I left you out. So, we'll put you in as a no. Correct?
Yeah.
That's the only change that I have.
Well, is it actually a -- my question would be --
What page are you on?
Same spot you were just at. We called it an informal vote, but technically we had to take a vote. Now, technically, we had to.
What was this for?
For the -- Moratorium, right?
No, this is not the vote.
Well, it's an advisory recommendation.
Oh. So, it says okay.
Right.
So, was the vote required?
Yes.
So, how can be informal if it's required?
Yeah, I wouldn't say informal. It's a recommendation.
We did on the next page. We formally voted on all of them.
Now, I'm asking because I remember during the meeting, it came from a discussion that we had to
Right. Yeah. Zodiac requires you to make a recommendation at that meeting.
So, I'm just saying it's not an informal vote if we actually had to vote. It's just a wording, but it's just my take on it.
Okay.
If anybody feels different, agrees, or...
Well, going back to that discussion, when the select board puts force to the planning board to a moratorium, we don't have a choice but to present it.
Correct.
So, it doesn't matter whether we have a vote on it or not. Anything like that that comes before us, we're required to bring it.
Well, anything that's duly submitted has to go to the planning board.
It has to be a hearing and it has to go to town meeting. So, it's not like we needed to vote on it. It's our obligation to do it.
So, you just -- you don't want to call it an informal vote? Do you want to call it something else?
Call it a recommendation.
So... Anything else?
Could everybody please sign in?
Need a rubber stamp?
I hope not.
Well, this isn't right then. Motion made by the -- the motion for large-scale ground mounted solar energy system moratorium. Motion carries four in favor, two opposed.
It's only a five-minute word.
Pardon?
It's a five-minute word.
Right.
It was three, not four.
What?
It's three, not four.
Oh. You're on the --
This one.
Third page. Third page. Fourth from the bottom.
Got it. It was a test to see if you were really paying attention.
Is there a motion?
I guess.
I'll make a motion to approve the second round of April 22nd, 2019 minutes.
As amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Need more time?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
The others, I think, are going to take too long. Before about 5:30. So, who's your agenda?
5:27?
Yeah. 7:00.
But can't make a motion to close the regular hearing.
I'm not sure that the flow here between you and the town attorney was -- so, what exactly was the outcome from your conversation?
Well, this is his response. They brought to our last meeting and made reference to the town aware and what was written in the newspaper as far as when they put a moratorium in place. And they had stated -- it was stated in the paper that the planning board had stated that any -- know what? Anybody that put in application for solar wouldn't be affected by the moratorium. So, that was my question, whether or not that was actually accurate or not. So, I reached out to town council to get some clarification. How does that -- is that actually true as far as is it an application that's in or is it an actual permit that's be issued before to allow solar field to continue if a moratorium was put in place? I kind of, like I said, based what I saw and read in the paper. I just wanted some clarification. And you see the response from town council in regards to it.
So, his last paragraph here on page one, he's stating what Ware did was inconsistent with 40A?
Right. Well, if you give you the next part, you have the edit piece to it. We're a town aware of a new planner. And they reviewed it and how that was, how they were doing it. If you see that part there.
It could be the reporter just misunderstood what the law says and noted it correctly.
But what he's saying is that they are basing it off the sixth paragraph on forty, forty-eight-six regarding three-year zoning freezes on an A and R, on A and R lands. Right. So what, what does forty-eight-six? What does that say?
So a couple ways to get protection from zoning. The A and R protection says that if you have an A and R endorsed before the town meeting, you get protection from use changes for three years. And a moratorium would be considered a use change. So therefore, they would be protected from the moratorium if they had an A and R plant submitted to the planning board and endorsed by the planning board before town meeting. A special permit.
So, so they, so what he's saying is they referenced the applicant had an application in, not an A and R, but an application in. And that they used the A and R process to exempt them.
That could be.
Okay. That came from the town planner, correct?
Yes. The last part there was his conversation with the new town planner. Great town aware.
So they used, so in other words, they used the reasoning of the A and R.
Right, so I, from my understanding, is that the town planner researched it. And the result was they're basing it off the sixth paragraph of forty dash eight, section six regarding three years on on A and R, the moratorium is passed on solar at our town meeting. That's kind of what they're saying, that that's going to protect them.
And then they've got forty-eight-six right here.
So that's what, that's what, from my understanding, just reading this, is what the planning board was referring to aware. That's how they're they're saying that if people have an A and R that are done and they're referencing forty-eight, section six.
That's a pretty easy thing to do, just have an A and R plan.
Right, that's how they're allowing it to still go through.
Right.
I don't know if they're looking to, the planning board was looking to protect people that already started the process or not. I'm not speaking for them. I don't know what their meetings were. All I know is what I read in the paper, which may be curious as to what, what actually, it actually meant, knowing from what we have discussed and what the law was.
Well, my point is they didn't file an A and R. The planning board used the A and R reasoning. That's what I'm reading.
Yeah, and I don't know how they can.
Well, they have to file, I know they have it endorsed. In order for it to take effect.
Right, so I guess what they're saying is some, maybe that's
So they, I think they're saying they did file A and R plans to gain protection. That's all I can do there.
He didn't get it cleared up. To me,
Yeah.
he didn't spell it out.
Well, because like you said, he was, he reviewed as what the law says. And it sounds like, just from what I read and hear, but in the paper, it sounds like
Here it says no.
They're testing the waters.
Here it says no.
Unless someone challenges them on it, that's where they're going from. That's the way they look at, as when they read it and their town planner, that's what, that's what they're basing it on. He said, I was just curious to why it said what it did in the newspaper. All right, ten, five-thirty-four?
Five-thirty.
We'll call the
Make a motion to close our regular meeting to be reconvened after the public hearing for Red Rock Solar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? So now five-thirty-seven PM, we're going to continue the public hearing to consider the application of CB, CPV Red Rock Solar LLC, Three Lion Street, Granby, Mass. zero-one-zero-three-three, for a special permit and site plan approval as required in the following section of Granby zoning bylaw, section three-point-zero, table one, schedule of use regulations, section five-point-nine-nine, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, section six-point-two, special permits, section six-point-three, site plan approval. The applicant proposes to install three-point-zero megawatt DC large-scale grounded, ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facility on approximately twenty-one acres of approximately seventy-six acre site, comprised of four budding parcels east of Lion Street, assessed parcel ID seventeen dash A dash thirty-nine, seventeen dash A dash forty, and seventeen dash A dash forty-one-point-one, which are located in the town of Granby, and parcel ID twenty dash four C, which is located in the town of Ludo. All four parcels are owned by James Noraki, JLN Properties, of Five Lion Street, Granby, Mass. Zero-one-zero-three-three. The site is located within a residential single-family zoning district. Sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Brian Hook with Time Bond here again tonight, and I have for you check for the peer review. I brought with me two complete, full, updated sets of drawings that include the correction on the labeling for the property line set tax that we discussed at the last meeting. And I have copies of our response to comment letter, as well as the response by Ben Naylor from Berkshire Engineering indicating that they didn't have any further
Thank you.
issues or comments. So this was all also sent by email to as much of the board as I could, so I'm hoping that everybody has seen this or is familiar with it. And I guess I would love to answer any questions or encourage you to close the hearing potentially and issue for the project since we've met, I believe, all the requirements, all the comments, all the concerns that have been raised, I think, by the board and by the peer.
These are the ones you went over verbally?
This is, this is exactly what I went through last week, and I, and I went through essentially verbally all of the comments and our responses, so this is where we formalized it into a letter for the files, as well as we sent it. I'm getting it days wrong. I think it was our hearing last Monday, Tuesday, whatever. It was, it was the following morning that I sent them to PBPC as well as Berkshire Engineering. And their, their email response from Friday afternoon is included there as well.
Do you have an electronic copy of the updated plans?
It is not because we had a technical difficulty with our scanner today. I can get those to you tomorrow probably, but I wasn't able to scan them, so I brought two hard
Okay.
sized copies.
Which will be, okay, that's fine, it's all you got.
Wait a minute.
Did they all fall asleep? I am a little concerned that the peer review did not look at the decommissioning plans, which are in the packet. Just to look at that and see if it's mixed well.
They didn't comment on it, but they did receive it.
Yeah, I'm surprised they didn't comment on it.
Right.
Hi, what did you see in it?
I, I, I don't really know what I'm looking at. So I know other peer reviews, some others have caught how the reimbursement was figured out.
If I can add to that, I mean, I prepared in accordance with what your requirements are. You know, I have actually reviewed a number of these on behalf of the the planning board as well. It was included in what was given to them, and they didn't provide any comments on it, so I feel like, you know, they, they were given ample opportunity. They made comments on some other issues that they found, they did not comment on that. We prepared it in accordance with all of your requirements.
You did, but I would still like a review, a peer review, just to be consistent with everything else. It should take him, what, one day to look at it at the most?
Well, how do we know if they didn't review it? They just don't have any comments.
Then, well, we don't have, it's nothing in the letter that they sent about it. He should have said something about it. It's in the bylaws.
But you, you just said you gave it to them, right?
They had it.
It was in the packet.
And Bill just said that they received it as well.
Yeah. They should have.
So are we assuming because they didn't comment on it, they didn't read it? I wouldn't, I don't like to make that assumption.
I wouldn't make any assumption. I would ask them to respond to that.
I guess I'm not sure why this wasn't brought up at the last meeting when you had their comments and it, and it wasn't even raised as an issue then. That we had the peer review comments. I went around the table with our discussion on these. And at the time, it was, it was pretty clear to me that there was consensus that we've addressed the concerns and the issues raised, with the comment that there, there was paperwork documentation required, that we addressed the comments in writing, and that they then responded that we've addressed their comments, which we have provided. I mean, if there were additional things that the board wanted peer review, I don't know why that wasn't included upfront. It's odd to add that now after we've gone through this, well, it's four months today since we submitted the application.
And it's
I'm sorry, yes.
It's what we've asked others to do. I'm just trying to be consistent.
And, and I believe that that was in the scope that you asked of it. And they didn't provide any comments on it.
So I would like
That tells me that there are no comments on it.
It doesn't tell me that. It just tells me they didn't look at it, but we could be both wrong. Until they actually give an answer from them, we don't know.
Well, was there anything else that was, that was in the scope that they didn't respond to?
I don't think so. I think they did a thorough job.
I mean, there, there are items that throughout the the solar bylaw that they didn't respond to specifically. I mean, we, they had a comment on item six-point-two-seven-point-two, six-point-two-seven-point-five, six-point-two-seven-point-eight. So there are a number of items that there are no comments on.
I just don't want the town to be stuck potentially with numbers that are not correct. Until somebody can tell me, besides the applicant.
I'm not the applicant. I'm the licensed engineer
Okay, but you're
working on the projects, and I provided it exactly in accordance with what the requirements of the board and the bylaw are. And we've gone through, I think, a pretty thorough review process, you know, for the last four months on this project, that is, it's, I'm not understanding why we're here now talking about something that hadn't been brought up previously, that was done by me with my professional stamp on it, that we're now bringing in your question.
I am not questioning your professionalism or anything like that. I just want a response from the peer reviewer. Close up that review, fine.
But the peer reviewer responded to items that they had
But the peer reviewer responded to items that they had issued, and this was one.
Then he should have put that in there.
But they didn't address every single subsection of the bylaw where they didn't have comments. That doesn't make any sense.
Well, that was my question, there's other areas that they didn't put anything, any response to it, because they had no response to.
There were more areas they didn't respond to than they did when you go through the solar bylaw.
That's just my opinion, if the rest of the board thinks that the town is okay and won't be stuck if something happens.
Do you have the information on that, the decommissioning?
It's in the application, I don't have it with me.
I can pull up if you want to.
Is there the original application?
Well, I didn't print this whole thing, maybe in the drawer there. Although it might be, if it's not in the drawer, Kathy Leonard has it. It'll have, it'll be. And it's better than this.
So, section of the last part of the application, appendix J. The total, the cost of dismantling is $42,188.
J, appendix J.
With a 10% contingency of $4,319, plus an annual 1.5% inflation increase brings the decommissioning total to $63,985.
And that meets our bylaws?
Excuse me?
That meets our bylaws in reference to.
Well, I think it, it's up to the engineer to prepare the estimate. Brian's a professional engineer, so that's his professional estimate for the cost.
And that is just for the portion of Grand.
Right. A portion of.
Or what would be part of it.
Right.
As a sole member of the board, I, because Berkshire Engineering did not mention anything about the decommissioning, through a couple of correspondence, I would have to assume that they had no issues with the decommissioning job that was done. I really think that we're starting to nitpick here, and we're starting to, we're trying to pull a rabbit out of our hat. I don't think it's fair to the applicant. If there was a concern, it should have been mentioned on the April 22 meeting, that the, when the peer review shot the questions, if, and it was not mentioned, something should have been mentioned by the board to the applicant, or to the engineer applicant, that further clarification needed to be taken with the decommissioning report.
Had I had time to think about it and read it and digest it, I probably would have. I did not, not when it's handed to me that night. I'm taking minutes, and I'm listening to everything else at the same time.
Well, in all due respect, you are CC'd here on every one of these emails between Brian Huntley as well as Benjamin Naylor. Why wasn't something mentioned through that?
Bill was handling it, I was only going to be copied on it. I'm not going to be questioning something without being in front of the board.
I don't think it's fair.
In the scope of work that I prepared, Brian reviewed and sent to Berkshire, it did include a review of the decommissioning estimate. So, I mean, it was in the scope, so I was assuming they would have followed the scope of work even if they didn't specifically comment on it.
Based on those labor rates, and it doesn't include recycling, so any of that material that can be recycled or could be an additional.
Would reduce the cost even further, yes. We believe that this is conservative, it doesn't include any credit that could be taken for recycling, or reuse, or resale of any of the materials. It's essentially a full-on cost to remove, dispose, you know, get rid of everything that's on the site. Which I also say that this is in addition to the requirements that CPB have with the landowner, or, excuse me, landowner under the lease, that at the end of the project it needs to be decommissioned and removed. And I recognize that this is an additional purity put in place should everybody go belly off by the end of the world, you know, at the end of the world when this happens, but, you know.
The same rates were used in Ludlow?
I believe the same rates were used in Ludlow, I don't recall any difference. I know that it was a different system size in Ludlow, but I believe that the same rates were used in Ludlow.
Now, how is this protected, by a bond?
I don't know what the method would be.
Bond, credit, or.
Okay.
Whatever is acceptable to you guys, we can make happen.
Okay.
Town council's approved both.
Right, you've done both.
We've done both.
Yeah, Bob, I'm with you, right, because just based on, they didn't answer some of the other questions that were posed to them, so it makes me believe that.
No, that's not necessarily true. They felt no need to respond to each and every article in the bylaw because they were addressed on the plans. It wasn't as though they didn't respond to questions.
Okay, okay, okay. But it kind of goes back to saying that.
Yes, yes, it does.
They kind of left, they didn't, if, if we're questioning one, why don't we question every other one, they didn't have a. And I would gather, the licensed engineer who did this.
Just being consistent, applying consistently to all.
Where he's held responsible, because he's a licensed engineer that's putting this forward, as being accurate and correct.
Yes.
So we're looking, asking another company to say yes.
Well, engineers can disagree, I mean, it's always, have someone else review the work.
But I mean, as far as that, the worst.
Just keep in mind, that's only there if they fail.
Right.
It protects you.
No, they.
And typically, well, what I see happening in 20 years, when these get decommissioned.
Please tell us.
They're going to be, there's going to be different product though.
Oh, absolutely.
Technology's changing like crazy.
We've seen that.
One applicant we've had before us, before we even approved it, they came back with changes for some, because of some technology in the panels. So, and that was just within a few months, so I can't imagine where we're going to be with solar in 20 years from now.
And we did include an annual escalator on there at 1.5%, which if you go back over previous 10 years, that was a reasonable approach to use for escalator.
I'm good with the estimate.
Rob?
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it, just based on two things, as I said, there was no response in regards to it, plus, you know, licensed engineer did it. I mean, he's taking his reputation as well as his license on it as well, that it's accurate and correct, so I'm okay with it as well.
Okay, we still don't have written response from the fire chief?
As outlined in the request, we've requested that all of the fire chief's issues be addressed prior to issues of the building permit, because the majority of the issues that he raised are based on final design issues that haven't been done and won't be done until after electrical engineering and final engineering is completed. The fire department has to sign off on all building permits before they can be issued. There's absolutely an opening there and an opportunity that we have to read all of his requirements prior to that, and it would be a burden to do a full electrical design now to be able to provide locations of disconnects, all of the additional information that he's looking for in the letter that he provided. So we've requested, or we are requesting that the board conditional approval on the requirement that we meet the fire department's requirements, satisfy his needs prior to issues of the building permit.
Were all of his needs something that wasn't going to be able to be finalized till the project's even going?
Correct, there were questions about access, there were questions about interconnection location, shutdown, where the shutdown was, training for his people, it was questions on like where all of the shutdowns were throughout the array. All of those are things that have to be addressed in final design.
Right, if I remember clearly, it could be on the Ludlow side, not on the Granby side, right?
Correct.
That's a possibility as well, so it wouldn't play a role into it.
Part of that's utility design.
Right.
We need, you know, control of that.
So what if the fire chief, you know, has some issues with the access or something, and would we call you to come back to the planning board, would you be okay with something like that for modification?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't think there's any issue with that, I mean, that's what we're requesting. I think, I think in general that the fire chief has been, you know, fine with the way the site is accessed, the existing access road. His questions are specifically about, you know, some of these like locations of this infrastructure we need here. And if it, certainly if it changes any of the, you know, the footprint of the project, we would absolutely come back to the planning board for modification.
Okay, so the letter we have from the fire chief is dated March 11th, is that the one you're working off of?
I think there was only one.
Yeah, so, and everything he asks for in here is something that's going to really be answered later on.
Correct, that's our proposal.
So, access to a great part of the, it's included, access to a great part of the site for emergency vehicles, lack of adequate space to allow for rapid egress for emergency vehicles? You can't, that sounds like a driveway size issue, or am I not following it correctly?
No, his concern was within the array, depending on where the electrical equipment was to be able to get down the roads, which is a final design detail, on where the electrical points are, subsurface conduits, and that information.
Okay, the number and location of emergency shut offs, as well as access to perimeter areas for the purpose of controlling an emergency response plan, and you probably won't have those to get them all.
Right, and there is, and I did talk to him and I pointed out that we do have a 15-foot clear area between the panels and the fence, so there is access for brush trucks all the way around within the layout that we have here in the drawings.
Yeah, and the rest of it is just. Additionally, the proposal includes what is referred to as an emergency response plan. This document is not sufficient and reads more as a contact list than an actual plan of action, which you said you wouldn't have until the end.
Correct, that will be developed as part of the electrical design when the final information on the inverters, the transformers, exactly where they're located, where the point of interconnection is, whether it's through Granby or through Ludlow.
Right.
There's, you know, there's a lot of information that we don't have yet, that we can't develop until we get these permits to be able to get in the smart program to be able to know that the project is going forward. But it's not, we're certainly not requesting that we don't need these, it's that we don't need them now.
And we don't have, conservation approved you.
We have an order of conditions that was issued on April 9th, I believe, or I think we're past the appeal here, with no appeals, so there's an order of conditions that is in effect for this project as permanent.
Okay, well, I guess we'll just have to ask them for it because they didn't send it to us, the response.
I don't have a copy of it with me, I'm sorry.
Now, the last, in our last.
You should be able to find it on the DDP website, because they actually input it the evening on the hearing record as well, so.
Address the question of batteries in writing, you had asked that at the last meeting. Potential batteries, maybe later on down the road, you had asked that in the minutes. 22nd.
On the last page of the letter, in addition to comments raised by you by above, you have an also wishes clarified that potential energy storage location shown on the drawings has included only for site planning purposes at this time. Should the applicant desire to add energy storage to this project, additional permitting authorization from the planning board will be requested.
No, that puts it in writing.
What was the other one you were asking for, conditionals, approval?
Fire department. I think it was just clarification on the battery storage, that it would require additional permits, permit conditions. I know that there's one that's been discussed every time, which is record drawings to be sent at the end of the project.
Yeah, ask what's. Any questions from the board?
Do you normally require an inspection, construction inspection engineer to be on the site to review progress? Is that something you would require once the project gets underway?
We had that as one of the.
Conditions on another project, which was a little bit more involved. Yeah, there was more, there was more involved with that.
So this is a two-town project, would Ludlow require that?
No.
What did they?
I'm asking, because it's in two towns, if Ludlow had a construction inspection requirement, and Brian just answered no, so, but I think.
Do you have any requirements, inspections for site stabilization?
Well, yeah, they're not requiring a third party hired by the applicant, no. There are requirements for inspection and reporting throughout construction, there are sort of requirements throughout the project for construction, but there's not a third party overseeing engineer that's responsible.
Typically, that's required in other towns to have third party on site occasionally to.
Yeah, if this was more, more involved, more complex, we have, the, the, the only one we've requested that was for the Kendall Street, because there was a lot of stormwater management issues, there were swales and stabilizing, but this here, I mean, we didn't request it for Dickinson Farm, we didn't request it for the ones on East Street, they were pretty straightforward projects where the building inspector is quite capable of managing these.
And especially since, most of the things we would be looking for would probably involve stormwater management, conservation has already said they want to be on site doing their own inspections and didn't feel the need for a third party.
Yeah, I don't see.
Review.
A good point.
And this project is already an impacted site, we're not taking, you know, an old forest and pyramid, we're actually proposing to make improvements in, you know, quantity and quality of water bottle. This is, you know, slightly different from most projects of this size and magnitude. There are no formal stormwater features, basically the primary stormwater management technique here is vegetation and site stabilization.
Yeah, you're pretty flat out there.
In the areas that aren't, we're actually smoothing some of those areas out and then loming and seeding and revegetating those areas too. And it all kind of, you know, drains towards the inside, and there's one single area where it does leave the site, which is already over a vegetated area that has been restored, you know, a number of years ago.
Is there a balance of soil on site, are you bringing it in or removing it?
There's no, there's no, it's a net zero on site.
Is there stockpile, a loam on site to support?
Yep, the overburden that was pushed off above the loam, above the ground, is still on site, that that's what will be used for the final stabilization. It's about as good a project as you can get from that point again.
So no import-export.
No.
So any other questions from the board? So any questions from anybody in the public, over here?
I know they're asking for waiver setbacks on the internal property lots, and I believe that's consistent with the plan, because the plan doesn't show, you know, each lot having separate setbacks to solve one project.
Right. Right.
And, um, four thousand, so, the board can grant that waiver for the internal setbacks.
That's at top of page three.
This has lots.
Brian, we talked last meeting about the solar company within the Watch Protection District. Uh, my question is, how are we going to clean the panels? Are there any chemicals that you use to clean the panels?
There's, there's no, there's no chemicals. In general, in New England, you don't have to clean the panels, because we get enough rain that they clean on their own. If there was a significantly dry period, it would be water that they use to clean the panels. There aren't chemicals associated with that.
No chemicals used to clean them, okay.
Probably less wind ex than the average person uses on the outside of their house, is what we use. Definitely less chemicals than the average house should use on their lawn.
You have to go out and clean them every now and again?
No, the rain takes care of it for those.
Okay, so you don't ever have to clean them?
I shouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say they never need to be cleaned, but in general in New England, we get rain frequently enough that if there is dusting of panels, the rain cleans up and takes care of it. If we have an air, a time of, you know, in the summer that was extremely dry and there was a lot of dust, they may go out and rinse them down with water, but it would just be water. There's no chemicals.
Any other questions?
Um, well, we need to discuss, uh, the request to waive the internal property line and municipal boundary line setback requirements. Can we make a motion?
Don't we have to close the public part of it?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's no comments from anybody, then we'll just discuss them once the board. Is there a motion from anybody? Close the public part?
I'll make the motion to close the, the public portion of the public, of the, uh, the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, as a board, what do we see? I guess, is, is there any conditions that we want to put on? I'll start, I know there are some, so I'm trying to say is there any? So we can list them.
Jim, you were looking for an as-built?
Yeah, the as-built and the emergency respond plan.
And that would refer to the fire chief's concerns.
And basically, from my understanding, they don't provide the emergency respond plan. They provide them with information, so that the fire chief prepares the emergency respond plan.
That would make more sense.
You know, I think, as Brian has indicated in comment number two here, uh, they're willing to comply with whatever requirements the fire chief might propose, including coming back to the board if, if he so requires.
Right, so the fire chief is basically going to create the plan.
It, it typically happens the other way around. He would typically put the plan together and, you know, he would then review it and there would be some back and forth. But certainly, we're, we're amenable to running whatever way works for him. If it's us developing a plan, if he's happy with it, that's totally fine.
Is that common? That you would provide the emergency response?
Uh, it is done, and it, it depends on what you call the emergency response plan. We would provide, and I guess I would call it an emergency action plan, and then it would outline if a shutdown is required, you are the step to do it. The fire department would create their own emergency approach that would be specific to their equipment, their people, how they're going to either fight a fire or attack the site or whatever they're going to do. But the, the emergency response protocol for the equipment would be done by the electrical engineer.
How to set, set the system down, so never went wrong.
Right, and then the fire department would take that and say, you know, hit to his first responders, you know, first guy, fifty-eight does this, second guy does this, or that kind of thing, which would be a, a catered emergency response to the community. We will have the same thing for ourselves for meetings of the facility or so, our personnel understand how to properly shut down the system.
Okay, so, so the, the one condition that we're putting on this is, is to provide the fire chief with the, with the information he needs to, to, uh, prepare an emergency respond plan.
Correct.
And as-built? Or is that not there?
That can, the other, the other condition, uh, prior, the other condition prior to commissioning would be the as-bills. Would be the second condition.
Now, we can't issue a decision. Right?
No, I would say, uh, you could issue the special permit, but it might be subject to the moratorium. That's not really for the planning board to determine. That's up to the time they pull a building permit, whether it's, um, subject to the moratorium or not. So if the moratorium is in effect till September, they commit and pull a permit in October, then, you know, they're not subject to it. Or they might seek other protections under the law to exempt their project, but I think you should go ahead and make a decision on the special permit and let the moratorium, we should just play out.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion to waive the setbacks.
Is there a second?
Can I say internal?
Internal setbacks?
Sorry.
Yeah, okay. No, that's, that's all right, that's all right. The internal setbacks between, basically the town line is what you're, is what you're requesting as a waiver.
And, and parcels with the internal, internal parcels.
Correct.
So the internal property line and municipal boundary line? So is that part of your, to waive the?
That's my motion.
To waive the internal.
And perimeter setbacks.
Line and municipal.
Town, town line.
Boundary line setback requirements. We need a second.
You don't want to lump all these together.
No, 'cause we have to, we have to approve the wave, waiver for.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Somebody opposed?
Now we'd make a, a motion to approve the project.
Um, before you go, there's this other one here, number four, that you ask, is, no, I'm sorry, number five. Request a planning board agree that conditions issued by the conservation commission for inspection reporting are suitable for this project. We need to vote on that before we do the official, official vote? That's number five.
Number five.
Question number five, last sentence in the response.
I think it's reasonable to, to require that. It's just assigning the inspection process to the conservation commission.
So, we need to waive that?
Right.
Or, just what it says there, agreed to conditions? Even though we don't know what they are?
Well, that's the whole issue. We don't know what they are, and why even get involved? That's the conservation commission's jurisdiction, not ours.
I think it goes to the point of construction inspection. I think you're assigning that to the conservation commission rather than having the planning board have.
It's not our job to, it's not our job to assign the conservation commission anything.
No, correct.
That's delegated by the selectmen, who is their, uh, who oversees the conservation commission.
As well as the code enforcement, so conservation has an issue with it, they can either cite them or, or the, um, the building inspector, code enforcement.
Okay, so.
The bylaw, the bylaw indicates that the board may consider special post-construction period verification of continued site stability. So it's, if, the, the comment from, uh, Berkshire Engineering is that within your bylaws, you have the ability, if you want to, to require it. And what we requested is that you don't, because we're already subject to conservation commission requirements on it. I don't think we're necessarily asking for a waiver. We're just asking that you don't require any additional inspection requirements.
Doesn't sound like something we need to, to vote on, though. I don't think we need to vote on anything like that.
I don't either.
I think it's, if you just said, Bob, it's under confirmations.
So again, back to my motion. With two conditions. One, the emergency.
Your motion to approve?
A motion to approve conditionally. Two conditions. One, to provide the fire chief with the emergency, uh, respond plan information. Second condition is to provide as-built drawings. Prior to commissioning. Electronically.
As-built drawings electronically, prior to commissioning?
May I add to that? As well as the general?
My motion.
I'm sorry, I didn't receive an answer to, may I add?
Go ahead.
As well as the general conditions that we have regarding the solar projects. Such as.
One through fifty-eight there?
Yeah, one through fifty-something, yes. However, they're tailored to fit this.
It's just boilerplate.
That's right. Fifty-eight, you already did correct.
But, but that'll all be, that'll all be in the, uh, decision.
Right, but just so it's in the motion.
So what are you putting in the motion? And include?
The general boilerplate.
The fifty-eight, general, general conditions.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
For a solar project. Okay.
Okay, before you.
No, I mean, to read it back?
Read the motions back.
Did you get lost in the middle there? Jim made a motion to approve, conditionally approve. Uh, we left it there.
Made a motion to approve with conditions.
Okay. With conditions, the application for Red Rock Solar LLC. With conditions, da-da-da-da. The conditions are as follows. Provide the fire chief with emergency response plan information, provide as-built drawings electronically prior to commissioning, and include the fifty-eight general conditions for solar projects. Do I get everything?
Anybody have anything else?
I will second Jim's motion.
Is there any further discussion?
Um, should we put down subject to the solar moratorium?
Well, we don't control that, though.
Right.
She asked if we put down subject to the, the solar moratorium, but we don't control that.
I, I would say, if I can add it, that it's not relevant to the approval. In my law, if, you know, it falls where it falls.
Right.
Regardless, you know, if, if the moratorium goes through, doesn't, however that falls, it's a legal issue. It's not a special permit issue, so we would. I mean, we would request that there's no reference to it in there, because it could be voted down, and it could be just a weird kind of condition that lives through the life of this project, if that's not the case.
And I don't, I don't think it needs to be in there just based on, because it's not something that we're, we're not permitting it. It's something that's a town vote and.
Right.
That'll lie where it lies when it's also in them.
And if, if it passes, you may be subject to.
Understood.
Further restrictions. Maybe not. No one knows. Okay. Sorry.
Anybody have anything else for vote?
We have a, a second? We have already a second?
Five seconds. No further discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah, so, we want to. We have to close this public hearing and go to the next one?
No, because I said we would reconvene when I made the motion.
After?
Motion to close and open the public, after the, the public hearing, we would reconvene.
Uh, to close the regular planning board meeting to be reconvened after the public hearing for Red Rock Solar. And open the public hearing. We got another public hearing now.
Let's just, let's, let's not get tied up with that. We'll just close, close this hearing out.
Right, this one's done, we'll, yeah, right, we're back into our regular meeting.
Right.
But then you've got to open it up.
So we'll make a motion to.
The next public hearing.
I'll second Jim's motion.
So what, what was your motion there, Jim? To close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
No, you're, you're closing our regular meeting to open up the public hearing.
No, we.
No, we got to close this one first.
We have to close the public hearing. Make a motion to close the public hearing for, um, CPV Red Rock Solar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So this is done.
Okay, that's done. We're back into our regular meeting, correct?
I think so.
Is that how your motion was?
I'll make a motion to open up or continue the, the, uh, public hearing.
So, I'll read it as such, uh. So continuing a public hearing to consider the application of Granby DG Series LLC eighty-three Orchard Hill Park Drive, Lemonster Mass. zero-one-four-five-three, for a site plan approval as required in the following section of Granby zoning bylaw. Section three point zero, table one, schedule use of regulations. Section six point three, site plan approval. Advocate proposes to construct a seven thousand four hundred eighty-nine square foot retail store on a three point six-two acre parcel, which is created by, from a six point one-three acre parcel. The property is owned general business, where retail stores are allowed by right with the plan, with, with site plan approval by the planning board. The property is located on the south side of West State Street, Route two, adjacent to C and G Machine Tool Company, and is identified as successor parcel ID map three, block G, parcel eleven. The property is owned, is owned by Omar A. Gingras, seventeen Strong Farms Lane, South Alley, Mass.
How you doing? Chad Hubbaker. I'm a representative advocate, and I'm here, uh, simply requesting continuance, uh, based on the fact that we haven't received our peer review comments, and I know the board voted last Monday, I believe, on the Tuesday. Um, based on the timeline, they were last week. They expect to get started on this week. We probably have the comments completed. This didn't need a couple of weeks, so our open is by next Friday, which is the tenth. We have peer review comments back, so they'd like to come and meet in advance, so that we can address them prior to the, to the next hearing. I know there's some Mondays, a typical hearing of the town meeting in May, and Memorial Day in May also, so, um, you know, we're flexible. We're, we're on, whoever the next available date would be.
We can't meet on the thirteenth, 'cause that's a special town hearing, or a town meeting.
Right.
Conservation has this the next day. We could do Wednesday. If you wanted to stay on our normal weekly.
It might be better, you know, to give time bond, some extra time to complete the review, rather than how long it's going to take. It's, they've had it for a week now. Thirteenth would be another two weeks. Maybe they can have done it in three weeks, you know, it's possible.
So you think it should be longer than?
I don't know, do, do you guys think it's a long time to take them to?
I thought based on the email chain that they, when they emailed last week, they said that we get started on it this week. It would take them a couple of weeks. It's about to be in two weeks, and then, so I know the town meetings are the thirteenth. Mondays was a typical meeting day, that was one day that we had thrown out was the twentieth.
So the twentieth. I'm gonna, well, we got another town meeting. I'm gonna oppose the twenty-seventh.
That's more of that. That's more of that.
Yeah, pulls in that day.
Yeah, the twentieth is the town elections.
Well, we can, we got a meeting, Town Election Day.
Is it the, the annual?
I know, but two Mondays are taken up in a row there. The thirteenth, when we would normally meet, is the special town meeting. And then if we wanted to meet instead the next Monday, that's when the, uh.
Town election.
Town elections take place.
So twenty-one or twenty-eight, Tuesday.
And we can't be up here if it's on a Tuesday.
So be it, go somewhere else. Somebody's got a better, uh?
We can go downstairs. We can go downstairs there.
We could.
If we need be.
We had to, yeah. If Wednesdays don't work.
I'm not adverse to meeting on a Wednesday. Or a Tuesday, it doesn't make any difference.
Twenty-second or the twenty-ninth then? Will the twenty-second be cutting it close?
I think in, that we do the twentieth, I think we'd be comfortable, I guess timeline two weeks and at least one week.
Why not the twenty-first?
Just leveled it up here.
We have pretty good attendance at the opening of that hearing, so I assume.
Right, so if we do, twenty-second.
That's a Wednesday.
A Wednesday. You're at a town?
Which night?
You're not?
That whole week, yeah.
Oh, that whole week?
I think the following week.
And the following. And the following week.
So those two weeks you're out?
Yes.
Then we need him?
No, we don't, this isn't a special permit, this is just a site plan approval.
So we really don't?
But, but if we're voting on it. Is, is this? It's not super majority?
Just a majority vote.
Okay. Or unless we want to. June third or June tenth? Boy, that's a long time not to have a meeting. With the way things are going.
Well, we're gonna just schedule another meeting just based on the Mondays we just talked about, so. We may have other business, then he's come up in front of the board, so.
What's your preference? What, what, nineteenth, twenty? Twenty-second, twenty-ninth, or until June? First week of June? You'd have a full board the first week.
We have June third, if we can ask.
Yeah, well, we wouldn't have a full board because.
I wouldn't be here.
Select board's meeting.
Unless you have an early meeting. But I did, and I have to leave, so.
So it would have to be the tenth, our normal meeting day.
Maybe a Tuesday or a Wednesday in May would be, would be better.
I'm fine with that. I just ask, I don't have my calendar in front of me right now, so. I'd ask it'd be a six o'clock meeting time, so.
It's your, it's your call, you're asking for the continuance. We just gave you those options.
So the options, I, I think the earliest, uh, just to make sure we get everything, we need to.
Let me just clarify. Twenty-second or twenty-ninth with a partial board. First week of June with a full board.
Partial. I wouldn't be here.
You won't be here on the third, but we can do it any, any other day during that week.
True. True.
So twenty-second, twenty-ninth, partial board, fifth with a full board.
I'll still partial, I won't be here.
What are you gonna be away with?
You coming back?
Yeah, what aren't you telling us?
Isn't it nice when you tell everybody in the Granby when you're being away?
Anytime after June tenth is good, isn't it?
So you only need three votes for a set plan, right? So three out of four.
Well, I'm just giving it the applicants, asking for a continuance, I'm trying to give them his options.
Question, if we were, if we were continued, we can close the area the next, when we got continued to the tenth, is a full board out a little bit? That's following, or it could be an attendance at, at hearings to vote.
No, you can miss one hearing as long as you review minutes and the.
And any documents.
Any documents and the, and then the.
Yeah, I would, I would propose the twenty-second is that, for the twenty-ninth, it means the board's gonna meet.
Twenty-second, make that, and then, okay, I got you.
So April twenty-second?
May.
May.
We're past April.
I'm sorry. May twenty-second?
So I'll make a motion to continue the hearing till May twenty-second at five o'clock, five fifteen?
I'm gonna say six fifteen, six P.M. And the reason I'm saying that, just, 'cause I don't have my calendar in front of me, but I wanna make sure that I'm able to make it, and five fifteen could be a problem, so.
At six fifteen?
Six, six o'clock. Well, it's gonna be a regular board meeting, so I mean, so we may want to do six fifteen.
Well, no, if we do six o'clock, we can start with other stuff even though you're not here.
We can start at five thirty if you wanted with all the other.
But this is for the public hearing.
Right.
So let's wait for me and see, and see how this works. I'm fine with that.
Or not waiting for Rob either.
No. He was trying to, he's just off, he's gone away too much. I'm fine with that, the board's okay with that.
Again, motion is to, to continue the hearing to May twenty-second.
At six P.M.
At six P.M.
Just as an aside, do you allow remote participation?
Remote.
So if Rob's on vacation, he could. We could put him on speakerphone, for example, and he could participate remotely.
Doesn't the town have to, uh?
No, let's not get into that.
I think we discussed that with Jim in the past, when you would be away.
Yeah, we had meetings, but just for informational purposes, we didn't vote or do anything like that, that way. So that's the motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is anybody opposed?
May twenty-second, six P.M.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's what you got from all that? Yes. Take care.
Take care.
Now, we need a motion to reconvene.
Make a motion to close the public hearing. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, continue. The public hearing.
We, we did that, you just did that.
I realize that.
But now we gotta.
I'll make a motion to reopen our regular meeting.
Oh, I know, we didn't. Just made a motion to continue, didn't you?
Yeah, we already did that. Okay.
This whole Roberts, Roberts rules of law that are just.
So the motion?
Who's making the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay.
Bob, second?
Okay, yes, second.
To reconvene the planning board's regular meeting.
Sure.
Did we vote?
Yes. I said aye.
Aye.
Tim said aye. Rob said aye.
I didn't hear aye.
I don't remember a roll call, even call.
You said, for sure.
Okay.
Okay, now. The other stuff?
What else we have?
We have.
We have. We never signed off on that.
Borrego.
Mike?
Borrego, no, that needs to be signed off. Because we got ninety days to sign it and get it in. And the clock's ticking. So, um, I think you've got one in there. You've got to sign it too. Yeah, and there's a dated draft, March twenty-eighth, right? On the top. Tiny, tiny.
Yes, March twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Tiny print.
You signed a draft?
I might, I might add, I think.
Yours is the twenty-eighth on top?
Yes.
Even though it says draft on the top, that's why I'm, I'm just kinda wondering about that.
Well, it's draft until it's been, you know, voted on.
Uh, we already voted on it, though.
No.
We have to vote to sign it?
We have to vote on the decision itself. Uh, there was some questions about the voting of that decision. So the board votes strong thinking that, I mean, um, endorsing this decision as a good.
Yeah, we got it, okay. So.
So essentially, you know, what happened is, it was a three to one vote. So it was denied because we had four out of five, three to three score votes, and there was one extension. And, uh, so it's kinda difficult to write a denial decision when majority of the board is in favor of it. So I think in that case, it sort of defaults to the reasoning of the person who voted against the project. Because that person had certain reasons for voting against it, and I think those are the only reasons you can put into the decision. Uh, so that's, uh, so I did work with, with Will on that. Would it, it's basically saying that we denied a lack of adequate information.
There's a new draft then?
Huh?
There's a new draft?
No, it's the three twenty-eight draft. It was a three twenty-five initial draft.
We have a spare three twenty-eight?
So unless the board has issues with, with that language. We, we, we would like to amend that language somehow, and I think that's about all you can really say. So that, that's on page four. We'll send the planning board's with the project. Just compile the section six point two special improvements to the Granby zoning bylaw. Because there was a lack of information needed to make an informed decision.
I dispute that.
But that's what I said.
No, what you said was you didn't have enough conserva, uh, information from the conservation.
No, I didn't, I said I don't have enough information to make a decision.
From the conservation.
I didn't put that, you listened to the vote, to the G-CAM.
Three times.
When you asked for my vote, I said I do not have enough information.
I still dispute the, the wording in this. Because you have to be specific on what.
I, I agree with Robert.
I'm, it's, you don't have to be specific for an, if you, I'm the one that has to answer to that. You don't. If it gets to court.
Well, we're being asked to sign the decision. Not gonna put my name on this.
You don't have to. I just need.
Simply stated.
Just needs one signature on it. Should have them all, but in the past, some planning board chairs have just signed it, not everybody else.
So, this decision once it's filed with town court for the twenty-day appeal period. In which case the applicant can appeal that decision at denial. My other thought would be, when I have the applicant resubmit. Uh, based with all the information that would be required. You could waive, you know, review, review inspection fees and that kind of thing, and then just reconsider the application with a more complete package of materials.
I thought there was a mass general law that said once it's denied, it can't come back for two years.
I think that there's something about that. There's something related to that.
Yeah, where they can't reapply or?
There is something to that. I don't remember the exact wording. I do remember reading something.
I know that applies to zoning bylaws. I'd have to check, see whether that applies to special permits.
Well, you know, I'm not an attorney, but if this goes to court, I can only think that the judge is gonna say, well. What information were you looking for specifically?
And I'll tell him, if yes. But that's not the reason.
Well, that's, I've, I've reviewed the, the, the G-CAM several times. And even the applicant said if I, if I knew that you were, well, first of all, he said that you can't deny based on another entity's decision. In other words, um.
Conservation, but that isn't what I said. And Mr. Town Attorney said I was well within my rights to do just that.
When did we have a conversation with the town attorney?
We didn't, Chris did. And that's another thing, Glenn, you were going to clarify? Some things with the town attorney on this. What happens if any of the board members refuses to sign the decision? Does there have to be a specific reason other than not enough information when denying a decision? And if all board members do not sign the decision by sixty-five days, it's actually ninety days after the March eleventh was made, does the project automatically get approved?
So you don't have to have all the board members to sign it. Because the vote was taken, your signature is, um, in reference to the decision, but that the vote has already been taken. So what the vote is, is what the vote is. So as long as someone on the board does sign it. It's in effect.
Do you have all that in writing from him?
Uh, I don't know if he's in writing.
Because that was one thing we wanted to make sure that he answered in writing, so we.
I probably, I forwarded to everybody. Everybody got that.
No, what you sent us today was the.
No, no, I, I sent that some time ago, check your emails, he, he had, he had sent it to me and I forwarded to everybody the decision they gave me. Because I listed the, the questions, and he had answered it. So everybody should've got that email.
Speaking of emails, did, did everybody get a notification for this, this meeting?
Kathy sent it today, she, she.
She sent it today.
I did not get it.
You didn't get it?
No.
Yeah, when I told you?
Yes.
She had just sent it.
Right.
I got my phone, I remember, I forwarded to everybody.
I checked it at four o'clock.
Wasn't there?
No, it was actually maybe three thirty, but.
Ten twenty-one. Yeah, you're on there, Bob.
Ten twenty-two this morning. She sent it. Yours is, um, RFS Junior? You having problems with that one?
Yes.
Okay.
And I told Kathy, I said strike that one and use the other one.
Okay.
Some, and I was thinking that maybe that that's where, I'll have to call Kathy and tell her.
Rob, are you looking for email from me?
I am, yeah. Page six hundred fifty-three, right?
Yes.
That would've been after March eleventh, right?
Mm-hmm. What are you looking for?
The response I received from town council.
Yeah. Um, well, that was on our last meeting. That you were going to do that. So the twenty-second, uh, the one before that, the seventeenth, I think? Have to look at the minutes, you got them there? I think the seventeenth is when that was on.
I don't have any of that. Yeah, yeah, this is, this is it.
April seventeenth.
And if you sent it to your, that other, you wouldn't have got that either.
Yeah, the G-O-G-T-T is on messed up.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The last email I got was May twenty-second. And March twenty-second. On that one. Everything else, I...
I have an answer to the question of can you reapply within that two-year period? So, chapter forty, section sixteen says that...
It's one heck of a chapter, huh, chapter forty?
I know. It's one of these run-on sentences that never ends. But it says, if it's been, if an unfavorable decision shall be acted upon, shall not be acted upon within two years of the date of the final unfavorable action unless the special permit granting authority finds by a unanimous vote of a board of three members or by a vote of four members of a five-member board specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action was based and describes such changes in the record of its proceedings. And unless all but one of the members of the planning board consents thereto. So the answer is you can...
You can.
You can act within that two-year period of a denial if you find that there are specific and material changes to the application. So if you wanted to allow the legal to reapply...
They would have to have big changes?
You could with the condition that there are material changes to the application.
Material changes meaning to satisfy the...
In the opinion of the planning board.
But to satisfy the, the original member's denial?
Well, I would assume...
Response?
I would, yeah. I think that's part of it, right? So whatever reasons there were for denial, there would have to be material changes to the plan that would overcome those objections.
In other words, if it was denied for something specifically to the site...
Sure, yeah.
They could have tweaked it and then come back with it if the board will, will hear that.
Yeah.
But the, the problem is it was denied for lack of information. But that information was never asked for. So to deny somebody the opportunity to present that information...
It was asked for. It was asked for the meeting before that. And he marked when he was over here standing, Dean Smith was standing, and he was, he was doing his presentation.
What was the information?
We had all these things and he's gonna come back.
That was, that was in reference to conservation.
One of them.
And then the other ones, we, we, we made it conditional.
But same thing, I'm telling you now. Condition, you're, yes, you can have this, but you have to turn in an answer to this. If I had any more questions on it, I don't have a chance to ask them. You've just stopped it right there. You've in effect approved it without any answers.
So I mean, I, I think we can go, we can't go back, you know, the decision we made.
Yep.
It's what to do going forward. But I think the information that wasn't available to be provided next time in the next application that would allow the board to say, yes, for the reasons for the denial of the town or the constitutional changes.
They could take it to court. A judge could say, I'm gonna remand it back to the, the planning board to review it again.
But then there's the time and expense of the town having to defend that decision too.
Well, couldn't they go to, sorry, couldn't they go to the zoning board of appeals first?
No.
No.
You can't appeal a special permit to the ZPM.
Oh, okay.
It'll be a zoning change.
If...
It would have to be for something that, that was not allowed in that area. They could appeal to them to, to, to make that change.
If it is resubmitted, is Rob then able to? Okay.
Yes, it'd be a new application.
It'd be a whole new application.
You'd have new public hearings. Probably would need to do another peer review, but you could if you wanted to.
Now, because we, we meaning the planning board, killed it. Does that mean that it's knocked off the ladder all the way down the line, including conservation commission?
No, I don't think so, no.
Okay, okay.
No, I mean, unless they revise the plan.
If they have any material change to the project itself, right? It's the same project.
That's, that's an opinion of the planning board to make, to determine whether there are material changes.
But a resubmission would require them to, the conservation, would it not?
No.
No?
Not necessarily.
Well, I guess I don't understand why.
If they're resubmitting the exact same plan, that, that would be up to the conservation, would it? But if conservation's already approved them, they're done. That's separate to whether or not we approve them or not. To my point, that we can't really say we're, we're making this conditional on conservation. If conservation changes something on a plan we've already approved, then they have to come back before us for a modification.
But the resubmit to us, we have to go through the whole dance again?
I don't think you do. If, if they're allowing us to, to, to bring it back, that if the board votes for it, according to what Bill just said, we can waive whatever, we can waive everything except for what they were denied by.
We can waive the public hearings?
No, not the hearing. I'm just saying, waive all, we, we wouldn't have to...
Peer review.
Peer review. We wouldn't, if nothing's changed, it's still the same application. The same project.
I'm just trying to understand this in case.
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay.
Well, it's definitely true. If it does come back to the board, we'll get all the clarification to make sure.
So I think it could be an expedited process. If you look at the decision, there were many hearings on that project. So it's thoroughly vetted. So I don't think it would require a long time period for the board to act.
So they, what was the two-year one, though, that we were? That they, they couldn't get back within two years?
Well, it does state that, but there's an exception.
Right, that's right. There's this big unless clause to it. Unless there are material changes and the board still finds, et cetera, et cetera. Again, nothing is clear in the statute. That's very worrying.
No, and they even get muddied up when the town council tries to provide us an answer. I'm really disliking this. Either yea or nay. None of this gray.
Because a lot of it's written as it's written, and there's no case law to say something different unless someone challenges it, and that's where you get case law.
That's really discretionary up to the planning board.
So, Rob, you didn't find that email?
No, from Glenn.
With the attorney?
I wasn't on that, I don't think.
You got it?
Yeah, please, see if I'm on that. Jim has it.
Well, that's it, it's sent it to you because it didn't... It wasn't part of the voting decision. Decision.
Yeah, I'd like to see it. Glad I can get it.
So, but I think the applicant is entitled to a, a written decision that's filed with the town clerk. Saying it's legal rights to appeal.
Right.
So I don't think you can kick the can down the road forever. You have to file that decision at some point.
We do have to, we do have to file the decision.
Right, so I would urge you to, to tweak this decision if, however you, you want to, and then we can get it filed.
So the town attorney said, what? Let's start, we'll begin with that.
The town attorney said, everybody does not have to sign it.
Okay.
As long as it has a signature from someone on the board. Whether it's me or anybody. The vote's been taken. The vote is what actual counts.
Now, about the question, does there have to be a specific reason other than not enough information when denying a decision?
Trying to remember exactly what he said. I don't wanna paraphrase it, cause I do.
But didn't you just say that you talked with Tom?
I didn't.
Or Chris Martin talked with Tom?
Yeah, he said I was okay.
You know, each member's entitled to their opinion on a plan. So if she felt there wasn't enough information to make a decision, I think she's within her rights to cast a new vote.
Oh, I'm not trying to...
He's saying it's, it's, that's, that's what Bob described to you, was, was, was believed to be said in the, when the vote was taken versus what's written here.
Okay, I see.
Lil, Lil is certainly entitled to make her own decision.
Just like everybody else.
But that is correct. She has a twenty percent vote. Well, in this case, it was twenty-five percent.
Yes. Don't get too used to twenty-five percent.
I hear that all the time. I can't find it now. I'll look for it later. Anyway.
I know, it's cause he answered me in writing, cause I gave him the list of questions and spelled it out to him.
So you forwarded it to us?
I did forward it to everybody, so...
I didn't get it.
Jim just pulled it up.
I had it before.
I don't remember seeing it.
Can you forward it again?
I will definitely forward it again, yes.
So are we signing this, or what are we doing?
Well, my thing is I, this might be, I think we owe it to the applicant to sign it, so the applicant can start their process, what they wish to do.
Right.
I don't think it's fair to continue with that, to let them wait. They're, they're gonna take their steps, they're gonna take. Whether it's to ask us to come back to this board, or whether or not they're gonna choose to take a, a legal side to it. I mean, that's on them, them what they wanna do. But I think they, they can't do anything until they actually have a decision in hand.
They have to have something to appeal.
So I think it'd be fair to them that, from where I stand, I'm, I'm fine with signing it to the point that the applicant can start their process.
I'm not in favor of signing it. I don't believe it's accurate.
I'll sign it.
And I, I, I do agree with you, Jim, cause I, I watched the tape, the, the video several times. I, I believe I have the same thought process that you and Bob have as well, when, when I reviewed it. But again, regardless of what it says in there, it's up to the applicant to decide what they wanna do. They can proceed, again, by reaching out to us. There is ways they can come back to this board, as Bill just responded to. And there's also a legal way they can go after it too, so...
So you need to sign two copies? You got two there, or?
Oh, it's two.
Yeah, he doesn't. I thought Kathy had put two in there.
She did, it was two. Is a vote required to sign this?
I would think so, yeah.
Well, let me ask you a question.
One person could sign it, but I think the board should...
What if the board votes and it's voted no?
I don't know. And I think we have to come up with language that everybody would support.
But we, we, I, I don't think we've ever voted on, once we voted...
I'm just, I'm just asking for, before I sign this, that's why I'm asking. I, I don't know, and...
Yeah.
I mean, I would think you'd still need a, an approval of the decision for the chair to sign it.
Well, it's required for everybody to sign it. Not required, but everybody's name is on here, so...
Right.
So I'll make a motion.
You gotta wait for Bob to come back.
Oops, yeah.
But that's my question to him. Well, the board can make a motion that it's being signed. They're not making a motion that they're gonna sign it.
No, that's not what the, you're, you're making a motion, that means you're approving the conditions and the denial, or the denial.
You're approving the decision the way it's written.
So if you don't file the decision within ninety days, it's constructively approved, I think.
Without any conditions?
Right.
At all. And that would be a big, big mistake.
Where are we with the, the timeframe? Anybody know?
Um, the, if we have, we have ninety days. And the ninety days will be up June ninth. Right? So March eleventh to the thirty-first?
Right, March eleventh, right. Ninety days from March eleventh.
Yeah, March eleventh to the thirty-first is twenty days. April one to thirty is thirty days. So there's fifty. All of May, thirty-one, that's eighty-one.
I mean, I suppose the board could take a vote to authorize the chairman to sign, even though they don't agree with the decision. Now, that would be one way around it.
Well, again, I, I was to, unless...
So that way, at least...
I would say unless the board is gonna... There is a, I would say dispute, but there is a...
Disagreement.
Disagreement as to what was actually said. So unless that can come to, or unless the board can figure out a way to bring that to closure, and either accept the way the decision is written, or change the way the decision is written, I would say that if we can't do something like that, I'd like to move forward just based on, I wanna give the applicant...
Right, I think that's fair.
I think it's fair, fair to them to start the, whatever process they wanna start, is to start the process. I don't wanna, you know...
But they can't do that until the decision is...
Well, that's, that's what you said.
A twenty-day appeal period from the date of, of the filing with the town clerk.
Right, well, I just wanna go in record that the decision should be released to them in accordance with mass general law, so... General law says...
Well, we have our ninety days to do it, so, but I'm...
But you're also delaying, if the applicant wants to do anything, you're delaying how much longer?
I'm not, I'm not delaying anything. That's not what I just, that's not what I just said. I'm asking that because there's members on the board who feel strongly that it's the, what's written in the decision is not correct. So I'm asking, is, is there a way that this board can look at that and come to a decision that can be agreed upon? Or if we can't, then we just, then my thought process is that, then at this time, we just move forward. Because I do not wanna delay this any longer.
I guess, yeah. My suggestion would be that the board authorize you to sign the decision even though they don't agree with it. So everybody's on record as supporting their own position, but we still gotta time the filing.
That would be like putting your signature on it.
It's like...
It'd be like signing. Be the same thing.
Well, except you're saying you don't, you don't agree with it.
That's why I'm not signing.
Right, that's right. We're not asking you to sign it, it's just to allow the chair to sign it so that it can be recorded.
So let me get this, this straight. If the board doesn't like a decision that's made, if enough of them on the board don't like a decision that's made, they can open it up for the applicant to come back until it's approved? The way they want it?
Well, no, I think each, each special permit has its own lifespan. So eventually, without a filing of the decision, it would, it would be constructively approved.
I know, but it...
So there'd be no...
I'm just trying to, I'm, it, to me, like, it's saying, okay, if, if somebody on the board doesn't like the decision, they can say, oh, no, let's, let's do this instead. And so we'll bring them back in, and they can just give us a whole much more documents, and hopefully, whatever will be answered. So, yeah, it'll pass now.
The decision's made, decision's made. Nothing can change that.
Then sign it.
Again, that's what I'm trying to get to the, where we, I just got done saying all that.
Why can't you sign it?
I can sign it, and I'm willing to sign it, and I, I just got... I can sign it and I'm willing to sign it and I, I just got done saying, but I want to be respectful to the other board members. If there's a concern as to what the decision states, they feel that it's incorrect. If.
Well, you stated you felt it was incorrect.
I do, and including myself with the board, uh, as individuals that feel that way. So if we don't feel there's a, uh, a way that we can approach this to look at it and change it to what everybody can agree upon, then I would, then at that point, as I'm saying, I don't want to prolong this any further. I'm fine with signing it as, um, as the chair of the board to let the, the process for the applicant start. Um, at, at this point, you know, I don't want, I don't want to delay it any further if this board cannot reach a, a decision on what is, in the decision, if it could be changed or not.
That makes sense.
Sign it.
We got a motion. I'll make a motion for Glenn to sign the, the decision for Borrego Solar Kendall Street Solar Project.
Why do we have to make a motion? This is merely a paperwork shuffle. After a decision's been made.
Normally you approve the decision.
Right, normally you do that, right? Decisions are submitted to you, you review them and tweak them and then vote on the decision.
So you're not, no, see not? Your motion was allowing me to sign.
Okay, so.
Is that correct?
Uh, yeah. So I make a motion for Glenn to sign the Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., decision, period. We'll stop, right? That we need. We need a second.
There is a second. I'll second it. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, uh, agree with approving this because it's not accurate.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, and I go back to what I just said. If there's any way the board feels, and we're all here, is there a way that we can decide whether or not what was said and is, to review it? What I'm saying is that we're all referring to what was said, um, a video that was recorded of our meeting. Do we sit down as a board and review that and watch it together and come up with what this board can agree on? That is why, that is what I kind of asked before. If the question is, the answer is no, then again, I'd say at this point, we move forward. But if the board wishes to do that, then I'm fine with taking that step a- as a alternative at this point. To give the board the chance and the opportunity to say yes, we'll sit down, we'll review it and look at it to come up with a, a decision, um, that we all agree upon.
I mean, I think the motion is really just to authorize you to sign the decision. It's not saying that the members agree with the decision.
It's not saying what?
That the members agree with it. It's just authorizing the chair to sign it so that.
No, I, I understand that, but I was also.
But he doesn't want to sign it because he may be signing something different is what he's saying. If we change our rights.
Right, yeah, but I'm, right. I'm just saying because I want to respect all the board's input and how, what their, their thoughts on it. So unless someone wants to do that, please let me know. If not, then I, then I, uh, I'll decide whether or not I'll, I'll second this, so. That is good. Alright, then I'll, I'll second Lillian's, uh, motion. Is there any further discussion? Final favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye. Or nay.
So what happened with the two-two vote? I still. Yeah, sign it.
I'd say, you know, it's up to you as chair.
You took a vote, right, to sign it?
So no one had any other options. So at this point, if I don't sign it, which I feel is my responsibility as a, as a board member.
What is, what decision usually?
Uh, usually means, uh, no, no decision.
So that means he's not signing it?
Usually, you know, you need a majority of a quorum in order to make the decision.
But you won't get a majority either way.
Let me ask this question. If the same, the same motion was made with Lil's name seconded and voted, could Lil just sign it?
I, I believe that's what town council said, that one, one member could sign the decision.
So with approval from the other members.
You're still gonna have the same vote.
Yeah, I, I think you still need a vote.
Correct. We do that all the time, whether it's one signature or all five signatures.
It's a decision of the board.
I, I, I don't know how that's gonna change it because I already stated that I was okay signing it as a chair of the board.
Yeah, you can't, you can't sign it without, without a majority of the.
I, I understand. I'm, I'm going back to what Bob, Bob just said.
Would that change your vote, Bob, if, uh?
I, no.
Okay.
I honestly, I really don't understand the need for a motion to sign, but.
Because you're signing the decision. And if this, we do that all the time.
If the individual members, members as individuals want to sign it, let them sign it.
No, because it's not a legal document without approval from the board.
So my question is now where does this go?
Bob could sign it. Bill could, it's gotta be authorized.
Okay, well, that's.
So then I think we need to come up with alternative language that the members can support.
Well, that, that goes back to where, and no one responded anything different.
So does anybody have any alternative language that we could, uh, use for this decision?
May, what was the day? May what? June?
June ninth.
June ninth is the, is the ninety day mark. So I'm gonna make a motion at this time is that the board sits down in a future meeting and review the, uh, video from our, um, is it April?
March eleventh.
March eleventh meeting. And at that time, we sit down as a board, watch it and see if we can, um, come up with a, uh, come up with language that we agree upon to be part of our decision.
Do we have a second?
I don't know. Is there a second?
We don't need to vote on that. Just put it on the agenda for the next meeting or whatever meeting you want to do it. That's all.
I, I'm, I'm fine with it. That's, we're gonna move forward with it. I'm fine.
Do we need a, a vote on that or?
Uh, no, you're okay. Put it on the agenda. I can.
Okay, so that motion is not going anywhere.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, no, we still have bylaws, just really quickly. And we also have.
Go ahead, bylaws.
A sample of the, um, Mullins rule form to sign.
Oh, yeah, set this.
We all have to sign?
No.
No, I have one for the last meeting.
Okay.
We have to.
I reviewed it. It was some paperwork I got too, so.
Did you need to hand me this whole? Did you need to hand?
One for everybody.
Maybe she have one for future?
I have it electronically. But one for everybody.
One?
All it's saying is you gave it to everybody so they have one.
Here's the form. We didn't have a form, so here's the form.
We didn't have a form before.
I see, okay.
It's not, they have to use it just in case you need to use it.
Okay.
Now, can I have that folder, please?
The whole?
Yep.
Where does this go when it's done?
Give it to file.
This?
Or if, yes.
If you use it, it gets filed with, with town clerk.
Yes, that's right. I think that's.
But it's also part of the minutes too. That has to be. And explains Mullins rule.
The certification should become a part of the record of the proceedings.
So we should keep one in the folder there.
Yeah, so we always have it, to have many copies.
What's that?
We should keep one in file here just for.
So we always have, in case we have many copies of it.
Um, this was in the administrative folder, which is a check for nine thousand nine hundred dollars from the, uh, Boulder Engineering. This is the, uh.
Review.
TG Series.
Right. So we have to do, they have the check.
They have to set up an account, right?
Yeah, we have to set up an escrow account and all that. So, um, we probably need a vote to do that, to set up the escrow account. Um, I can do the letter like we did before.
Right. Authorizing the treasurer to set up an account.
Yep.
I had, I had sent you a form for that.
For the, um, escrow?
To send to, send to the treasurer.
Okay. Um, I'll have to look because we did one already.
If you already have a form, that's fine.
Okay.
I don't think you really need to take a vote of the board for that. You've already got the money in hand and just let the treasurer set up the account. That note was from Kathy saying I need something official for planning board, saying what, what it's for.
Nine thousand nine hundred.
I would assume the form is self-explanatory after you fill it out.
Right. Okay, so we need a motion for that? No? Okay.
No. That's good.
Escrow, okay. Okay, so that's that. Yeah, I'll be right along. The, uh, the last select board meeting, the warrants were, um, approved. There's a, this is that, which means some of our wording has to change a tad because they went from the very first version. Keep it going down. Don't stop. And one more.
Running out of people down there.
So.
She'll come around to, well.
These are the warrants that are, are posted supposedly today on the town's website. And the first document after that is the re, the report. That, uh, is under Glenn's name. You got it there, go ahead.
The report, that's under my name.
Take the paper clip.
The paper clip.
Okay. This is the report and recommendation. It's the first thing right after this.
Oops, there's one. Okay.
Okay. Um, the bold part under, under article one. As we decided to pull that one basically. So that's what we have to do at the special town meeting. We have to say this. Okay, that. After input from the April twenty-two, two thousand nineteen public hearing, the planning board recommends this article be withdrawn. And our changes.
You know, on, on the first page, you're sort of mixing the subdivision regulations in here. We talked about those don't need to go to town meeting.
Oh, that's right. Good catch.
So I would remove references to the subdivision regulations and just submit, uh, those things that town meeting has jurisdiction over.
Yep. Something bylaws, okay. Okay, good. Good catch. All the rest basically stays the same. We have to do like we did at the, um, at the public hearing where we have, here's what we were proposing in our, in our document for the single-family dwelling. And then the next sheet attached to that is the amendment we want to do. Okay, at first, we were just changing, adding the five, uh, lots. And now we're also correcting five point four oh and five point four one. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think as long as somebody gets up and sort of, you know, tells people.
Yeah, because they'll have copies, they'll have copies of this. Kathy will make copies of this. Are we, are we following on that one?
No, where are you?
Was that a yes?
Where, no, no, that's a no. Where are you?
This, this one.
We're, we're, pass that document.
Yeah, we're still reading that document, right?
Single-family dwelling on estate lots. Got that? Yeah, top right, it says proposed, and then on top right on the second one says amendment. So we have to introduce the amendment saying we want to do a little bit more than what we originally said. Because the warrants article doesn't have all of the changes in it that we want to do. Does this make sense now?
So, so the word is proposed, and then so when it comes to the town floor, we need to go up and state we want to change it to reflect this.
Correct. Yeah, when article three comes up, it'll be read like this, and that's just part of it. That's only the second. Five point four one, we want to change, we want to make changes on five point four oh two with the zones.
Okay, so.
So article three. We're, we're gonna change, we're gonna make a comment on article one to withdraw it.
Yep, so that. So article one, we're withdrawn.
Yep.
So that, so that's on, that's on the sheet right here, correct?
Yes. And that's the only one that's on that sheet. Okay, and on article three is the single-family dwelling on estate lots. And they only have in there adding in the, the five consecutive estate lots. They don't have the other change for five point four oh to correct the zoning.
Okay, so article three is gonna be amended.
Yep.
So, so, okay, so article three gets, gets read.
Mm-hmm.
Then.
Then you say you want to make an amendment and then you go to the second page of, uh, the amendment. See, the one that says proposed is the one exactly the way it's written in article three, the proposed.
Correct.
But now we want to amend that, so you go to the second page of that one, to the amendment. It says amendment on the top.
So we have to go to proposed first?
Well, proposed is what's here on the article three, exactly.
Okay, so we're gonna amend it to the amendment.
Amend it.
To the amendment.
Right.
It might be helpful to sit down with the town moderator before the meeting so that he or she's understands how this is gonna work.
You can't just amend it. You've, you've got to.
Propose the amendment.
You got to propose the amendment, then she's gonna go to the, to the, um.
Town floor.
Floor, ask for a second. And then a vote to allow us to amend it.
Right.
Correct. Then you can go to amend it as it states here in the amendment in bold.
Right.
All the other stuff, five point four two through five point four six.
We didn't change anything.
Doesn't change. We're just amending five point four one of the article.
And five point four oh. Now, five point one three is the new one we're adding in. So that's this whole, the whole thing's in bold, which is exactly the way it is in the, in Article Four on the list of warrants. You got it there, Jim? Article Four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Proposed.
So the proposed and what's in Article Four match. We want to amend that with five point one three point one, which I made the whole thing bold because that, now we want to, it's easier just to amend the whole thing. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So out of, the only thing that's being amended on Article Four is five point one three.
Point one. Point one.
That's the only thing out of Article Four, correct?
Correct. But I bolded the whole thing because it's, it's still new. It hasn't been.
Yeah, I know, but I'm, I'm just saying we. Okay. I just don't want to confuse people.
They're going to be.
Confuse myself.
That's a lot to, a lot of wording there. Other than that, oh, and I did have.
What's the difference?
Five point.
On the amendment? And. Estate lots be adjacent to each other. Here it says business estate lots may be adjacent to each other at the street line with up to a total of five consecutive estate lots, all requiring site plan approval by planning board. Where this one says two, two estate lots may be adjacent to each other at the street line without site plan approval. It's not, then it's, then it goes in, additional estate lots need.
What he's reading here.
So.
This one right here.
Right. What it's saying is, so the first one's.
You're on the report, sir.
On the report, I'm not on the warrant.
Yeah, here's the warrant. See, it says two estate lots.
Oh, I see.
We need to change that, too.
To business. It's just the way it's worded to it.
Yeah.
You're, you're talking about.
Instead of two, we're doing all of them instead of just two.
I know, the biggest thing if you look at. You're taking out without site plan approval.
Right.
Right, and you add again.
Planning board needs.
All requiring site plan approval.
Yeah, so we're replacing that whole thing, basically, that whole section.
Right.
That whole, yeah.
Because when.
I think the business regardless is going to have site plan approval. No, it's, basically what we're saying here is it's, it's confusing. Two estate lots may be adjacent to each other. We're getting rid of that. Oh, there never was two estate lots in a business zone for business. That was verbiage that came from the, the residential.
Right.
So. So, so, so now we're saying we're allowing business estate lots, period. Follow me?
Mm-hmm.
See, he's, he can explain.
Yeah.
And the only other question I had was, was brought up at the select board meeting on the, the solar moratorium. With the September thirtieth dates, only gives us like two weeks to work on it. So I would propose we change the September thirtieth to November thirtieth. That'll be six months. This was originally written for the February special town meeting, not for May.
What are, uh.
On the last one, Article Seven. The last one of ours, anyway.
Does the town one want to have a fall special town meeting?
Good question.
I mean, I think the moratorium should at least run to that fall town meeting. Otherwise.
Yeah. Can, can we, can we change that now, or is it too late?
We can, not right now. We can put an amendment on the floor. We should have changed it before it went into the warrants.
Yeah, two weeks isn't enough between public hearings.
No. And giving the attorney general all the time it needs.
Well, that's ninety days.
Yep, so you back up ninety days.
Well, you could, you could start your review after the moratorium goes into effect.
Or if it goes into effect.
Right. You don't have to wait ninety days to start thinking about what you want to do.
Right.
So if the moratorium is, it passes, then it's your job to sort of look at the solar bylaw and suggest changes.
Right.
The whole public hearing.
And, and the thing is. And I know I'm starting to sound like a broken record here, but.
No, please say it because I think I know what you're going to say and I want to hear it.
It's a, it's a, it's a, a, a living document. We should be looking at this stuff all the time. So if in fact the moratorium goes through, and we've only got a, a, a window, a, a, a short window for it, if it doesn't get amended on the floor or, or we choose not to do it, because amending stuff on the floor gets complicated and it gets confusing for people. Then we look at the, the, the big ticket items. What is, which I'm, I, nobody's been clear to me what they're, they're looking for us to do. But we review it and if we don't have to come up with fifty million things to change the bylaw. We can go after two or three things or something that we think is, is manageable before the moratorium runs out. If we, if we choose to do that. And then, and then after that, we can, we can look at the, some of the smaller things that, well, maybe we should try, you know. Or sometimes we make these changes based on experience, what we've encountered in the past. So to say ninety days and, and to Bill's point, we can get started, we don't have to wait ninety days. We can get started on something.
In reality.
If it goes through.
We have been talking about different changes. We've been talking about it all along, for a while now.
I mean, you could, you can amend it on the floor if someone chooses to do so. I, I don't take issue with that, to, to make it a full six months, but I just try and remind the board, this is stuff that we should be looking at all the time. I mean, we, we just, we're proposing business estate lots because it came to our attention by a couple of different folks in town, and it made sense after we talked about it, had discussion. So to do, to worry about if it doesn't, if the article or the amendment doesn't go, then, then we'll just, you know, the amended article to extend it to six. If it doesn't go, then we'll just work with the timeframe that we can manage. What's that?
Are we going to propose the amendment, or do you want to wait and see if somebody else does? How do you want to do that?
Oh, I'm not in favor of proposing the amendment to extend it.
Do you think we can do it in two weeks?
Uh, I don't know if we can do it in two weeks. But going back to a lot of discussions that we've had and what people have been saying, the biggest thing that I hear from anybody is clear cutting. It's the only thing I've really heard anything we, anybody can talk about as far as concerns. Even at the meetings that we've had for solar projects, these are the things that are, that are coming up. It's the only thing I really heard some of my concerns with. So can, can we do it in two weeks? Probably not. Reality is, no, probably not. But it doesn't mean that, you know, it has to be done in two weeks. It just means the moratorium stops. And it means other people can apply for applications and so on and so forth. And we've seen just from here how long it takes for someone to get a, a special permit for for, to, to have a solar farm. I mean, see, some people have taken five, six, seven months to get the full, to get passed the, the application piece and you know, all the questions being answered and things like that. So I, I, I don't see at this point to continue it.
The, the selectmen submitted this article to the planning board, so if they want to suggest an amendment for six months, I think it's up to them to, to do that.
I mean, I, I, I think it's there. The moratorium's in place. And this is all, this is all based on whether or not the town votes to put the moratorium in place. Because it, it could be no, and we don't go anywhere with it. But I think, I think this board has been talking about this now for some period of time and has heard input from the people in the town as to what's a lot of their concerns are. And I would imagine if we have a public hearing, or will we, if this goes to a public hearing down that process, we're going to hear a lot of the same things we've heard. And I think this board can act. Click it up.
I'm not, the only thing I've heard from is, is basically what Jay has proposed or, or mentioned. I didn't even hear anything from the, the, the hearing we had for the moratorium. There was nothing specific out of the audience with what they were looking for.
Well, they, they were just, it was just a moratorium. It wasn't, so what do you, what do you think we should do? So you wouldn't hear anything, no?
But like I said, I've, I've heard throughout the meetings that we've sat on for app, applications for people for the, the solar projects, what their, what the residents concerned with.
Well, you know, take two thirds vote at town meeting to adopt the moratorium. So if there are that many people in favor of it, if you open up your meetings to get input from the public, you should get some input from people as to why they voted for the moratorium, what they want to change.
Right. And I also think, uh, you know, not to, but if we, we stay with the date, it makes this board get on the ball and get it done. Instead of waiting it out to, oh, we got six months, we can take, oh, let's, let's get it done. If, if it's that important that the town votes for it, then I'd say it's, you know, the, not that we wouldn't let this board step up to the plate and get it done.
Yeah, I mean, certainly TVTC can help to restore change of alternatives and suggestions.
If, if, if people feel different than this board, that's just my, my personal thought on it. And if someone at the, the town meeting can always amend it if they wish, someone from the board can do that. We can't amend it now. It's going to happen on the town floor.
Right, and it would have to be done on the, at the meeting, special town meeting. So are you, you're going to fill out one of those forms there?
Yes.
I believe that's all I have. Oh, there, oh, there's one thing about the peer review list.
Do you need one of those forms?
No, I have it. Put that back in.
Jim, you've been here the longest, lucky you.
Yeah, you've been here the longest.
GZA was questioning how they could get on our approved, approved peer review list. Do you remember how it was every year?
Yeah, listed. It's a simple vote. I mean, GZA is a, is a large engineering firm. I, I believe they've looked at projects.
I don't recall their name anymore.
Yeah, they're, they're a pretty big outfit. I'd slightly agree on that. They're like VHB and Ty &amp; Bond.
So did we want to talk to them about it? Have them come in and talk to us, or did we want to just?
They could just send us an email or a, a letter stating they wish to be on and, and give us their credentials. That's all.
Okay. Um, Bill, you want to take that then?
I don't, I don't think we need to do an interview.
So say that again, though. You want me to talk to GZA?
GZA, yes.
Have them submit a request to be on their.
Right, with their credentials.
So they symbol, you know, what type of disciplines do they?
Okay.
Basically be the home. Their homepage on their website. Been doing this for X years.
So our next meeting is going to be.
At least May twenty-second.
Do you want to, want to wait till then?
To.
Well, our normal next meeting would be May thirteenth. So we're not doing anything that week then. We could, we could do Wednesday, but to have the.
Quite frankly, we have enough meetings. If there's nothing huge on the agenda, then let's just roll with it. That's my opinion. We've been meeting a quick bit.
Well, the only thing is, well, it's going to be on the next agenda, so we discussed earlier as far as reviewing the GCAM video, and that we'll keep on pushing that out because if someone can't make that meeting, then we're kind of like.
Well, um, the retail store was postponed or continued to May twenty-second. Do you want to, do you want to do the video thing then, too?
Well, May twenty-second, we have till June. June third, June ninth, what was the date?
June ninth.
June ninth, so I'll be answering. I guess it's like two and a half weeks away, three weeks away. Does the board feel it's enough time? My only concern is that someone can't make that meeting and, but do you want to meet before that?
Well, May twenty-second, everybody could, right?
No, Rob can't.
But I don't. Yeah, I don't agree with her. Well, that's under the decision.
Right, it doesn't matter. You do matter, but.
And you won't make the June ninth meeting either, is that correct?
Yeah, so June tenth? Well, that's the last. Tenth is Monday. I'll be here.
That's the last day for filing with the town clerk, so you have to.
Yeah, that has.
We need to be done before that.
Correct.
Turns out I'm making sure that, okay, so.
Well, we need to do it May twenty-second to review the tape, or we could do it at another time.
I think you should use that meeting to finalize the decision.
Right, I want to, I want to finish what we've done, but then this decision's.
But then the decision has to get written, and then the decision has to get signed.
Right.
And when are we going to sign it?
Right, so.
If we all agree, if we did it earlier.
Hopefully they'll come up with some revised language that can be voted on, and then, you know.
I just want to make sure we have enough time, that's all.
Then we can quickly change the written.
And that's why if we met earlier and it was all agreed upon with a specific language, then the decision could possibly be signed on May twenty-second. Everybody at their calendars. Yeah, you can just approve it as amended, if in fact it gets amended. I'm agreeing with you. So you want to wa, you want to look at the video before the twenty-second? Whatever you guys want to do.
Either way, so I would say if we meet on the twenty-second and we review, we review the video, and whether, whatever way it turns out, do it have to be another meeting after that anyways to sign? If the decision has changed, if the wording and language has changed, we need time to have it changed, and we need time to meet again to sign it, which we can do anytime.
I just said we don't need to do that.
We don't need to.
If it's amended.
Yep.
We can approve that night as amended. Bill drafts it, emails it to you.
Right.
You have to sign two copies and give it to Kathy.
No one wants to see what Bill wrote?
If it's anything other than what we, we approved for the amendment.
Right, just what you had voted on.
All right.
Well, you're not looking for all member signatures. Not just, he just needs an approval.
So that's May twenty-second?
May twenty-second, okay.
Okay, we have to establish, May twenty-second, what time we're starting.
We're starting at five thirty because, um, Granby DG Series retail store is at six.
Okay.
I'll put that on the agenda after that.
Or before it, if they, I mean.
I want us to have time to sit down and discuss it and.
Oh, yeah, to view it and everything else and. Um, now, the other thing is, May twenty-seventh is Memorial Day holiday. That's our next regularly scheduled meeting Monday. Are we doing the twenty-ninth?
Let's see what's on the agenda.
After the twenty-second.
Yeah, after the twenty-second.
It'd be nice to take a little break unless we need to meet. Seems like we were meeting.
Every week.
Every week, twice a week.
Yeah. Okay, so our next meeting is May twenty-second at five thirty, and we're going to have the Verigo Solar decision on it and continuation of the public hearing for Granby DG Series.
Yes.
At six. Okay, can we quickly run through the to-do list so we can get it all?
Sure.
Okay. Glenn, contact town attorney regarding Verigo Solar questions.
I did.
Completed. Um, I was to follow up with Jeremy Carrier for bylaw changes prior to April twenty second public hearing. I did, he, I don't think he really cared. So, I explained what we wanted to do, so completed. Asked Susan Westa for an accounting today. I'm leaving that as in progress, and I'm gonna change it to, um, Susan's boss.
Catherine Rette.
Yes, who is still, won't give me, and we have a bill from them, from.
Right, I had a conversation with her, uh, about that, and they've asked me to sort of break out my invoices to charge time against different applications.
Different projects, okay, so she's probably waiting for that?
Yes, I just met with them on, uh, Thursday, I think, so.
Oh, okay, so I shouldn't, and I hear it right now.
So I'll get that to them. So if that's okay, I mean, I thought, so that you would then charge back time spent on applications to the applicant?
Right, that's.
So that you wouldn't have to come out of town money for the PVPC assistance?
Correct.
Okay. So I'll, I'll get that to her this week.
Yeah, 'cause, um, we'll be needing another one soon, because it'll be the end of the contract and, uh, new and budgeting fun stuff. So we'll need to have all that done. Glenn, still meeting with the high school principal. Are we kind of putting that aside, thinking as we're thinking of a planner now?
I think if we're gonna have a planner, I think we're, but then again, it probably will still want seventy minutes. We'll see what we can do.
I think we should continue to look.
I think actually.
For somebody to take minutes, because who knows how long this part-time planner may be before it's, he or she shows up.
Just we advertise again that the, uh, the council are aging. Is there anyone down? No, I don't know.
They don't want to go out at night.
I'm getting to feel that way too.
Well, I don't know, maybe, you know, it's a different people routine, and actually they're just leaving it up there and looking at it.
At one point we had a conversation, you were gonna check on the advertising clause between the Hampshire Gazette and the Springfield Review.
Yes, uh, I don't have those with me, um, depending on how big your ad is, it's very big. I even checked online if you were most people who are more proficient with computers would be. Um, but you're paying by how many times somebody clicks on your ad, not necessarily what you're gonna get, so that gets kind of costly. That was indeed.
What you could find, like, uh, like one of the local colleges, someone that could do it, like an intern, and studying like town geography or something like that, part of their.
One of the things you could do would be a temp agency, and it would be a long-term commitment.
We could look at a temp agency.
Yeah, we would think of that.
Yeah.
Our only issue there is the, you know, we can get a laptop, but where does the laptop stay then?
We could keep it right here, we have a locked cabinet, we can keep the locked cabinet.
Okay, but that person's gonna need to take it home, finish the minutes, and do all that sort of stuff, have an email account.
So that person actually does not have to take it home. If that, if, if, if we're going through a temp agency, then we could have that computer laptop at the town hall, and that can be done there. It can be in town property, if she does it downstairs or does it upstairs, that little desk, we can set, we can actually set up times that would be, that person would work. We're gonna set up the time that person works, so we can say, you, you could take the minutes, but you come back and you, you create, you finished the minute, the minutes, all this stuff, information here.
You're, and you're probably gonna be paying mileage for them to be driving back and forth.
No, not with temp agency, you're paying per hour, this is a job they're gonna have.
Yeah, they've got minimums to go.
But you're paying, you, you're paying, they're gonna be paying minimum wage, you pay temp.
No, I don't need minimum wage, I need minimum time. You can't bring somebody in for an hour and.
Yeah.
Well, I never see one of these meetings last an hour, so, uh, so if it's five hours a week, you know, it's, it's, it's something we're looking at, and it's something, maybe we could task that person with other things, so too. Maybe that person is, is preparing stuff, that person's making all the copies that Lily makes and stuff like that.
If we, if we get a planner, maybe that person could work with a planner.
Right. Another option we could use that person, we could have this, this, just in regard to something to look at. You know, not to say it'll work or not, but it's definitely something to entertain, see if it's feasible or not. It's an option.
It is.
Uh, probably they'll wait until after we get a, uh, planner. Is that one being advertised now, or you have to wait?
I don't know, I think you have to wait till it's approved, because it's, it's the fiscal year for next year.
Oh, okay.
But I don't know if we need to, if we have to wait. We should find out what a temp agency, what the, the minimum requirement is, is for hours.
Okay, um.
It's too much, and it's too much to be hours, it's too many hours.
Let me add that up here.
Whose name is putting beside that?
Lilian.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
It was right here.
It's a good thing? Okay, I'm gonna check the temp agencies. Okay, so, um, yours, we're gonna say yours is still in progress with the, or do you want to abandon that with the principal?
Oh, abandon, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to him, I'm looking to point to.
Send a signed copy.
I just don't see the, the, you know, some kids they plan, they're here for three and a half hours, then they plan on being an hour and a half, and they have homework or whatever they do, so, I don't think it's fair to them sometimes.
Yeah.
So that's my only concern.
Okay, send a signed copy of peer review contract to Berkshire Engineering and ask Kathy Leonard to mail a hard copy to them, that's completed. Jim, contact Chris Martin to discuss hiring a part-time planner. Completed.
It's already in the works.
Good job, Jim. You see the future sometimes.
And the rest are ongoing, create a spreadsheet for PVPC charges, which we just gotta get that bill back, and keep track of items to submit for the town annual report, those are mine. Okay, done, ta-da.
Before someone makes a motion to adjourn. Where are we at with the, the, the Pioneer Valley, they provided us with the planning document?
Oh, the permitting guide?
Yeah.
Oh, I forgot to read. It's, it's at my house, and, um, I'm not happy with it. Um, I have to look at it again, because when I looked at it real quick, it was all in black and white. And you know how we have those lovely color pictures with the flow charts and everything? Why would you want to print it in black and white? And it's on paper just like this, no cover stock, and it's combative. I wouldn't give it to my dog, but we didn't pay for it.
Well, can they give us one copy in color or, or electronic copy? I'll take it down to Staples.
I have, and Kathy has the electronic copies. And I noticed there's a couple of blanks in there that should've been filled out, so, um, and for when it needs to be updated, we both have it. I can, if you, if you want, I can have it, you know, five copies printed with the hardcover, cover stock, and all that, to make it look a little more professional. And then we could decide if we want to do more.
I think you could put it online, most people would probably go there to, to look at it.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'll get with Kathy on that too.
Right, we can always, the town, the town can always have X amount printed for time being, if you need more, they can always have more printed, like you said. Majority of people can go online, they can actually go down there and pick it up.
Sure, you could say, you know, copies will be available for twenty-five dollars at the town clerk's office or whatever.
Don't discourage them.
Well, whatever was the reasonable thing.
No, but to, to Lil's point, she, to get some printed up and put, so that we have it with the rest of our bylaws, so, I would say, yeah.
Okay.
Get ten copies, five for us.
We need to vote on that.
I'll make a motion to. Is that something you want to do, Lil?
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to have, uh, Lilian print out, have ten copies of the new gu, the, the new permitting guide.
In color.
In color, yeah.
And the sample.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Anybody wants anything else with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Repose?